Hello, this is School Committee Update today with Laura Patone from Ward 5. I'm Sarah Fishman. How you doing Laura?
I'm doing really well. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. So we got a lot of stuff to talk about, but I want to start with a quick bio recap, how long you've been on the school committee if you have children in the system, that kind of thing.
Great. So I'm starting my 10th year, which is quite shocking to me. And I have two children, one who's gone through the system and one that's currently at the high school. She's a junior and what is there something else? Just that's it.
Maybe your subcommittee assignments or that type of thing?
I am kind of co-chairing the building maintenance committee, which is a joint committee with city council, with Councilor Gomez-Moocad, and I'm sitting on multiple committees, but right now I'm not chairing any of the other committees.
You're the only school committee person though on the charter commission, right?
I was, yes, which wrapped up this summer.
Okay, good. Okay, so now the hot off the press news is that the five finalists have been announced for school superintendent. This is round two.
Yes.
So round one, there were three finalists, one dropped out, no one was selected from the other two, right?
Yes.
Okay, so do you want to give us the...
Sure, I mean, I'll give a brief background. You know, it's like any hiring process. You go through the process, you have your best intent, your screening committee is looking at resumes, they're looking at the interviews, and they do their best job moving people forward. And there's not always a fit, there's not always somebody that you want to hire. So I'd like to say that, you know, we did one round, we didn't get to where we wanted to be, and the school committee made the decision, we could have either reran the search now or run it again next year, and the committee thought, we do have enough time, and this is important to us to do it now. We have an interim that's only contracted for the year. So we decided to rerun the search. So we didn't have to do all the upfront community work, which was done well, and we had our focus groups, listening sessions, surveys.
So you didn't have to totally restart it?
No, we didn't have to do all of that, but we restarted the open application period, and we did really active recruiting to bring in really exciting candidates. And now we announced our five finalists that came out last time.
You had 27. You had 27 people?
We had 27 last time, and I apologize, I actually don't know the exact amount we had this time in the screening.
I thought it was 27 also.
It may have been. That might have been in the press release. I was not on the previous screening committee, so I can't really speak exactly to that, but I can speak. We had the equivalent number, and we've moved forward five candidates.
As opposed to three last time?
Yeah, last time it was three. I mean, the charge to the screening committee is move over the candidates that you think meet the criteria of the community, and based on the information you have, should be considered by the school committee. And I just, I can't say enough at how thoughtful and dedicated the group was doing this work. I was really, it was a real privilege to be part of that this round.
So this is the biggest job, I think, right, that the school committee has?
100%.
And you weren't involved in round one, but you have been in round two, so what changed there?
I think the goal was to just kind of expand the group a bit. Like I said, based on my experience this time, I know how hard and dedicated and thoughtful the group had to have been the first time around.
Yeah.
And the decision was, okay, you know, we've got a group of people that still want to be part of it, but not everybody does because it's a huge commitment. So not only do you spend, you know, a whole afternoon doing resume reviews, you spend two whole days, and we did another half day because we did 10 interviews. So it was all day Saturday, all day Sunday, and then Monday afternoon. And then you had to spend time to deliberate. So it's a huge time commitment. And so the decision was made to bring different people on to sort of just add to the group and just get some different perspectives, so.
Also though, you are the longest-serving person on the school committee currently.
Yep.
So I believe that means you are the only person who was involved in the super search, so to speak, when Mary Skipper was chosen.
That's correct.
So you have some hopefully...
You know, everybody I think who came into the space had different perspectives. I was involved in putting out the request for proposal and writing up the RFP for bringing in a consultant. So I certainly feel like my talents were tapped in my experience.
This time or last time?
No, this time, like meaning like in last summer. So like we didn't redo that work.
Right.
And I was tapped to do that work, and I was really happy to take my experience and apply it there. Part of it being a school committee is you kind of have to share the work.
Yes.
And kudos to our chair, who's trying to distribute the work as thoughtfully as possible to build up the skill sets of the body. So anyway, so yeah, so it was great to be part of the second round, but like I said, I felt based on what I did, I can't imagine, you know, the first screening committee did the best job that they could with the pool they had.
So who are our five folks?
So our five folks are Ruben, Dr. Ruben Carmona. He is the Executive Director of Family Community Employee Engagement in Salem. Jill Geiser, who's the Assistant Superintendent in Bilrika and is a former principal in Somerville.
Healy School, right?
Yes, Healy School. She was here for at least five years, but...
Were your kids at Healy when she was principal?
They were. Michelle Madera, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education in Cambridge. And her career has been in Cambridge, but also really deep in Boston. And Marissa Mendonza, who is the Deputy Superintendent in Pittsfield, and who was also in the former finalist pool. And Toby Romer, Dr. Toby Romer, they're all, they all have doctorates, by the way, very highly qualified.
A lot of doctors in the house.
Yes, all doctors in the house. Have a heart attack. Assistant Superintendent in Newton right now, but his career also has a lot of depth in Boston.
So just to make clear, so one of those five people was the finalist in round one of this search.
That's correct.
And that was the person who dropped out of that round.
Yep.
So is there anything more that you're at liberty to say about that or...
Yeah, so first of all, I want to be clear, like, I don't want this whole thoughts about the candidates to be only about her, but I do think we need to answer these questions because I think these are really exciting, diverse candidates.
Yeah, you got a good group there.
A really exciting group. And, you know, we had an exciting group last time. This is just a bigger group with different people.
Yeah.
And, you know, in her, so she had dropped out, it was for personal reasons, she had a family emergency. She was very explicit. Someone asked me, he's like, was that just like a line that, no. It was, it was clear that something went down.
That's what I wondered it might be.
No, it was clear that something went down, and I don't want to disclose it because it's her family, that put her in a position that she couldn't commit to the job at that moment. And this time around, you know, she decided to resubmit her application, and she's going to have to speak to what has changed because obviously in a family emergency, dynamics can shift.
Right.
And so that was the situation.
That's the situation, okay.
And then we also shared that she proposed, she's proposing a period of hybrid employment as she starts part-time, remote, as she transitions her family closer to Somerville.
That's a long commute though.
Exactly.
If she's around Pittsfield, does she live in Pittsfield or she...
She lives in Northampton.
Right.
She shared that, yes.
Western end of the world, so to speak.
She's acknowledging that there would have to be a transition, and she's asking. But that's something that we're going to have to talk to all the candidates about in terms of start dates, you know, conditions for their employment, and that's something that the school committee is going to have to take into account and negotiate.
So are there any five-star qualities that you wish to see in a superintendent?
Yeah, I wish I could like play back the recording of what the screening committee shared. They were so thoughtful.
But I want just your...
No, I'll do my best.
No, your opinion.
I'll give my opinion, but it's hard for me not to represent the broader view because it's, it's all important to me. But so really, I don't want it to sound like a buzzword, but equity-minded, and has demonstrated that they're willing to push the envelope. Somerville has really made some serious progress in that space, but as we all know, this equity journey is long and complicated, and there's a readiness and an interest to move forward on that work. So that was, you know, above all in our surveys, and I think if you talked to every school committee member, I would be shocked if that wasn't the first thing on their, on their list. The second thing is someone who really can lead, and lead collaboratively, and is, has kind of a distributed view of leadership. We've built out our central office staff a bit, we've added some roles, and I'm excited to have somebody come and get those people on the ground and running. You know what I mean? Like, I'm not saying they're not running right now, but it takes a real leader, and then at some level, a manager, to be able to sort of set this group on fire and allow them to realize their potential. But you have to be able to empower these people.
Delegate.
Exactly. Because it's, and it's a huge job, right? To be the superintendent, you're kind of the buck stops there, and so how do you leverage this huge pool, group of talent in your organization? And so both of those are, one of them is about kind of cultural, and one of them is about, are they ready to do the job? And so for me, that's kind of the umbrella, is like, are you a cultural fit for where Somerville is and our values, and are you somebody who can do this work? And recognizing that not every candidate can do everything. So we have to look at the talent we do have, and what the candidate's strengths are, and how we can balance that out. And I want someone, I mean, to be frank, that the community's excited about. And when I say community, not only parents and guardians, but also our staff. So that's someone they feel like can lead them.
Can do it, yeah. So there's a, going to be a set of interviews.
Yep.
And each of these five people coming, looking at the buildings, talking. And then there's a public comment period, I think, that starts Monday, right?
Yeah.
They call it a community feedback window, and I keep envisioning this slot where people were asking for ice cream. I don't think that's what's meant by it.
No, I think the idea is that, you know, we'll hear from people today. I mean, I'm already hearing from people today, but like, okay, once we start these interviews, then we're going to put up a, last time we used a Google form. I know that sounds really like nerdy, but...
No, I think that's good.
I actually really loved it.
Yes.
And I really encourage people, someone said, I didn't fill out the form because I didn't think anybody's going to read it. All I can tell you is that I poured over that stuff.
Is it going to be out later this week, by Monday, something like that?
I don't know the exact date, but it'll be out shortly. But at that point, you know, it's, people have had to have looked at information about the candidate, they had to have talked to people in the community, and hopefully have watched some of these interviews to get an assessment of them. And we know not everybody's going to sit and watch all the interviews. I actually met someone during office hours last time, and I thought this was really thoughtful. She like watched the first like 15 or 20 minutes of every interview because she knew she couldn't watch all of them.
Right.
And I almost think if you watch like the first chunk of an interview, maybe watch the last 10 minutes, you can kind of get the feel of the candidate, because not everybody's going to be able to commit that many hours. I'd rather have them touch into it a little bit so that they can be thoughtful than sort of just hear the hearsay about someone. So I don't know, did I answer your question? Are you asking about feedback?
I was asking about that, and then also the timing of it, so.
People can start to talk now, obviously. The Google thing will be out soon.
Shortly, yeah.
And then the official timeline, at least on the website, said that there was going to be a period where it closed.
Yes, because at some point you can't, we can't read them.
So is that going to be the last day of the interviews, like April 4th or so?
My guess, no, 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 it'll probably close. I don't know the exact date because I don't think it was published, but like the day before or the morning of the day we start deliberating. Like, we have to have, as school committee members, a little time to, you know, to absorb all of that. And keeping in mind that not everybody has to fill out the Google form, they can email us.
Right.
They can reach us on social media, they can call us.
Yeah, that's good.
My colleagues, we'd be thrilled to hear from people, and with, you know, from all elements of the district. You don't necessarily have to just call your ward person, it's really...
No, that's good. That's all I wanted to establish, was how people can say what they think.
And I want to make it clear to people that this is the school committee's responsibility.
Yeah.
And the buck stops with the school committee. So, you know, people are going to talk to different leaders in the district, but...
You guys have to...
We have to be responsible for this, and we have to answer to this. So that's why I encourage everybody to reach out.
Okay, good. All right, so I want to talk now about recent votes on police presence in the schools. So can you just recap the two votes that happened recently? It was this month, right?
Yeah, and I apologize, I might not know the exact votes.
That's okay.
And I want to just acknowledge the special committee, Subcommittee on Policing.
Yes.
And, you know, in particular, the three school committee members, Dr. Sarah Phillips, Andre Green and Eleanor Barrish, who were both at different times leading that committee, and Superintendent Jeff Curley. This was just really complicated work, and all the members really brought in different perspectives. So my understanding is that, you know, we've, right now, as a school committee, improved guidance. So generally, just for people who maybe don't know the details, but usually you have like a contract with your police department, it's called a...
A memo of understanding kind of thing?
Yes, yeah.
Something like that.
MOA, Memo of Understanding, where there's clarity around the roles and responsibilities and the scope that the schools and the police interact. And we had a very detailed one based on the old legal requirements, where we had to have a Student Resource Officer, which is called an SRO, in our high school. And, you know, we had different community officers assigned.
That was a state requirement through 2020?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes. So once that state requirement sunset or was eliminated, that's probably the better word for it, it was also during a time of really like strong community unrest.
It was COVID too.
It was COVID. There were several instances of, you know, police brutality on people of color. You know, there always have been, and they always continue to be, but these were ones that really...
And then right before, there was an incident in the schools here involving a young child, right?
I can't talk to it, but, so there's, there's just been a lot of energy and a lot of activity, and a lot of concern, and a lot of voice, I guess is that's how I would put it. There's a lot of voice about, you know, challenging the past structure. So a decision had been made, Dr. Phillips put forward a motion to eliminate the SROs. We passed that until we figured out what we wanted to do. And so the long game is to have a new memo of understanding.
Right.
But the vote we had recently was about, you know, guidance to the superintendent, about when to call in the police.
Right.
And what kind of information to share, because those are really the two key components, as well as, you know, are you going to have somebody in building? Which we are not recommending having assigned police officers in the buildings.
And from 2020 until now, that was suspended, right?
It was all suspended, and there was not necessarily that guidance.
Right, but the situation now has been?
Yes.
No one's been there, no police officer has been present.
Yeah, and so the new, moving forward, there is not going to be anybody housed in our buildings. But there's the, there's a recommendation that there's two detectives of family services, I think that's the proper term, who are people who are trained with working with young people and families, who are going to be our go-tos.
Okay.
So those are the people.
In the police department?
In the police department. So those are going to be the people that get reached out to. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, there's a lot of common sense to this.
We like to see that in our government, right?
And, but they won't be based in schools.
Right.
But to move forward, the superintendent has to work out this memo of understanding to flesh out all the details of that. And that's work that still needs to be done, and work that has to go through the school committee. So I don't, did that answer your...
I think that's most of it. I guess the only other question I had was, did you issue guidance on what constitutes an emergency?
Oh, that's a great question. I mean, basically, it's, I'm going to give you the three conditions, and my understanding is really criminal activities, so bodily harm.
Right.
Damage to building.
Right.
And like significant theft, but I don't know the exact language, I apologize, but basically...
No, that's fine.
Those are, you know, those are the real reasons to engage with the press.
And this would be a joint process, right? One of the candidates in round one of the super search made it very clear that it was important for the school committee to be operating autonomously and the police department, and not have the superintendent or presumably the mayor insert themselves in that process beyond appropriateness. So is, it would just be something that's going forward, or is there any timeline for it yet, or...
I don't know what the timeline is. So the ask is for the superintendent, the request for the school committees for the superintendent to do this work, and it's only going to go as quickly as the parties are able to engage and negotiate, because it's a process.
Okay, so no more people there, and specifically, no more people in the high school, right? That was an issue, wasn't it?
For some people it was. I mean, there was a lot of variant points of view in this situation.
Yeah.
Families, staff, but like, I think the sum total was, we don't want them in the building, as like, as housed in the building.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Do you know anything about Boston or Cambridge or Medford? Do you have any? I didn't look, I didn't take the look, so I apologize.
I know that my colleagues do. This was not something that I did a deep dive on, so I apologize. I don't want to answer to that.
No, that's okay. I didn't look either. Okay, let's talk about something else.
Okay.
So charter reform, which is changing the charter, which is our constitution for the city. So you've been on that committee, which as you said, is wrapped up. So was there, well, generally speaking, is there anything in there that's going to have a strong impact on the schools that we should focus on?
That's a good question. I think overall, the intent and sort of the values around accessibility and transparency are the things that are going to impact the schools and the city. So like those are...
Like for example?
So like accessibility to your elected officials, accessibility to actually run for office. We really tried to think about ways to make it more, lack of a word, accessible. So for example, we used to have so many signatures for, to get on the ballot, and we reduced the number of signatures.
And I think you guys did that for mayor, for city council? For ward, school committee, and council people?
I'm trying to remember, I don't remember the exact numbers, but mayor, and definitely mayor and at large were larger.
Yeah.
And they may not have even been adjusted, I'm not positive, but the other ones were adjusted lower. And then, you know, we also put in a couple of like, for like, of study groups. I'm probably not using the right language, but who would investigate ideas like public funding. So the whole idea is, you know, in my vision, if anything we could do in our charter to improve accessibility, improve transparency, improve community voice. So there was actually some elements that included like a community forum early on in the budget process, which I have to say, our current mayor, Valentine, was actually putting that in anyway, was saying like, we need to have a formal process where we don't just get input at the end. Like, you know, old timey, it used to be, okay, well, here's the whole budget, what do you guys think? As opposed to, these are our priorities.
And now there's that participatory...
Exactly, and they've added the participatory. So some of the things that Mayor Valentine...
She's already in that direction.
She's in that direction. We wanted to codify in the charter. The other piece, which we've done some of, where we're in the process of doing some of this work within the schools, but we talked about this for the city, is just how to be more equitable in distribution of pay as for city employees. So...
So teachers versus other people?
No, just all across the board. So we've done some work, and it hasn't been completed unfortunately, where we've asked a consultant to look at the pays, the different pay points. Not so much of like, what does a para get paid in Medford? But like, what is the job of a para compared to other jobs in our district?
That makes sense.
And particularly for our non-union positions, because our unions do a great job of advocating for positions. So a para was probably not the best choice, but you know, if someone who works in central office or someone who works in administration, if they have similar responsibilities, their pay should be similar.
Right.
And the expectation, or one of the groups that we've asked to be created for the city, was that idea of, don't just look at, well, what do our call center get paid compared to everyone else? What is the work of a caller center compared to work of someone else in the city? And is the pay equitable?
Right.
So it was a really, so that was another tenet, so like equity, accessibility, and transparency.
So I think one of the suggestions was to allow 16 and 17-year-olds to vote in municipal elections, as well as non-citizens. But as a school committee person, what is your reaction to that?
You know, it's an interesting one. I kind of evolved a bit on it, because at first I was like, whoa. But my, the research is out there, the younger you allow people to participate, the more likely there are going to be an active voter in the future. And to me, that is like a, it's really powerful, because I really believe in access and voter participation. And you can instill that into someone, like by the time they're 18, they're kind of one foot out the door of the high school, but you can actually instill that as part of the civics work that you do in the school.
Well, I think also with social media, people are so much more plugged in. I was criticized very recently by my son, who is in his twenties, about not knowing that Michael Bloomberg had switched parties, and...
Says my husband, how could you not vote? National, blah, blah, blah.
So it really, I think the awareness is so much higher.
Our young adults are so thoughtful, they're such critical thinkers, and to give them an opportunity to participate, like I said, my first reaction was like, whoa. Of course, thinking about myself when I was 16, but a 16-year-old today is different.
It's different, yeah.
And that research around the fact that it really improves the likelihood that they will become a lifelong voter is really compelling to me.
Okay, so there was also, one of the commissions, I think, that you guys thought should be established was on ranked choice voting.
Yes.
Which is too complicated to explain right now, but is a different way of voting.
Yep.
So do you have an opinion on that as an individual?
When, when it came up, I mean, it was so holistically supported by the city when it came through the state ballot, even though it didn't pass in the state ballot, it really was...
Well, did it pass in Somerville?
It passed in the Somerville, like, I'm not going to get the exact number, but like 70%.
Yeah, it was a big margin.
It was a huge margin, so we really, it would have been unconscionable if we hadn't considered it very seriously. And, you know, the tricky bit is that it's a little more complicated. The bottom line is like, you get to weigh in, like, not just my number one choice, but who did I like next, and who did I like next, and who was my second choice, my third choice? That's really people need to know. That's why it's important, is that we're not just going to, you know, not all the number ones are going to be the ones who get it. Now I'm already getting complicated in my description.
No, that's okay.
So, so yeah, so I, I was torn, but I really learned a lot in that process. And the fact that our city was so supportive, I was hard to not support it.
That makes sense, that makes sense. Okay, so now, school, building, facilities, and maintenance Subcommittee. Okay, I got it.
You got it.
I got it. So you are chair of that Subcommittee, correct?
Yeah, it's a, it's a committee, it's a city council committee. We were actually, we were trying to make it a co-joint committee, and it was a little, I don't want to get technical, but it's been a little challenging, but Baya and I work in partnership on it. So she's technically chairing the Committee.
That's the Ward 5.
Yes, she's the, Baya Gomez...
Beatrice Moocad.
Moocad, yes. And yes, it's been, it's been really interesting. It's been really exciting to work with our colleagues on the city council for something that we're all really passionate about.
So is this unusual for the school committee and the city council?
Nobody knew how to really do it. Like I said, our structure is still like kind of up and there.
So then it is unusual?
Yes.
Okay.
But I think it reflects how Somerville really wants to move forward.
Right.
And kind of the vision for the future is to continue to partner more and more between the schools and the city. And, you know, in Somerville, which is not, every district is like that, although we have, the school committee has authority over buildings, so there are buildings. We've asked the city to manage the maintenance and the capital...
Department of Public Works?
Yes, and the capital improvements through the ISD, which is...
And Special Services?
Little company, I apologize. There's so many acronyms.
There are.
It's not inspectional, but it's basically the Capital Projects Group, who do the investments as opposed to the maintenance.
Okay.
And it's been really illuminating, and I hope helpful even to the staff to have greater visibility and transparency to do the work that's being done. And clearly, this administration has increased the focus on the maintenance of buildings. It happened at the end of the last administration, particularly because of COVID and concerns about air quality.
Right.
And it's been really a good experience to partner, to have these conversations in public, and to create some more visibility to the work that needs to be done to our buildings.
So what's come out of it? Has there been a specific issue addressed or approach taken?
So, I mean, there's been a lot of conversations about the Winter Hill.
Yes.
Because that's one of our buildings that is most challenged. You know, I'm not saying that this work wouldn't have happened without the committee, but having the attention to, the city has brought on some new staff, and particularly focused on the maintenance of buildings. And they're working on a database to keep track of the status of all the buildings and the status of maintenance. So there's really good investments that the city has been doing, and this has just been an opportunity for, to create more visibility to it, and also just have more voice about the concerns. And so, yeah, we're also working on a reporting structure, so like every quarter to get kind of a general update on what's been done in buildings, and what had, like at a big picture. So that's something that hadn't existed, so that's exciting.
So since you've mentioned it, the Winter Hill School and the Brown School are both, I think, schools being looked at in that kind of way, right? So is there any perspective, you have any sense of what's going to happen with those buildings?
So, I mean, I don't, yeah, the city has verbally and, you know, in communication stated that they want to address the concerns with these buildings. The Winter Hill in particular, they both have different challenges.
Yes.
You know, the Brown is not ADA compliant, it's over 100-year-old building.
It's wooden.
Yes, the Winter, the Winter Hill has had electrical issues, HVAC issues, like...
Can smell in some places.
Yeah, there's, there's a whole gamut of challenges. And kudos to the parents and teachers who came out to our Monday night school committee meeting and participated in public comment, and were really, really vocal, specific, and passionate about wanting to have something better for students.
Right.
And something better for staff, because it's not, you know, it's, both of them are really struggling in this facility. Issues with Wi-Fi, cellular service. So there's an intention to do this work. The, we've, as a school committee, we've already, in the district, we've already started an enrollment study, which is kind of a starting point. We hadn't had an enrollment study in probably six or seven years, where you have somebody from the outside come in and make a projection of where they think, not only in general, where they...
To figure out if you need more buildings.
Exactly.
If you have more students, that you need more buildings.
Yeah, and we've only seen some like preliminary data around total numbers, which was kind of like, it could be a little more, it could be a little less. But in terms of not being a vast range, it was sort of like, okay, it could be, I don't, I don't remember the exact numbers, but basically, you're going to still kind of trend in this direction, but we're going to get more data about what they see the profile of the students. So for example, just anecdotally, we're in our...